Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 5th, 2013. First, we'll begin our meeting with the invocation led by Arnold Almarez Glassman, and followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Andrew McIntyre. Please rise.
Dear Lord, we come before you this evening, and thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon the city, upon the elected officials, the community, the men and women who protect our city day in and day out. We ask that you please also bless our members of our armed services and protect over them as they protect our country, and guide and instill the freedoms that we all so are grateful to enjoy, especially on this election day. Please bless the city council, the mayor, and members of the city councils as they make their decisions this evening. In your name, we say amen.
Everybody, please place your right hand over your heart. So we can see the flag of America. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Sanderson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hurford. Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Satello?
Here.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
And Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Hurford will be here shortly. He had just said we could go ahead, because we're all excited, look like, ready to leave. Yes, so we want to handle our agenda tonight. We have some things on here. We first, we will report out from closed session, Mr. City Attorney. Are there any items to report out tonight?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. The records should reflect the City Council convened, with all five members being present this evening. Excuse me. And that prior to recessing to closed session for both the City Council and the successor agency, the items that were listed on the agenda were announced for discussion and inclusion in closed session. The following is my report. Under public employee performance evaluation, direction was provided to the City Attorney's office to prepare the necessary and essential amendments to the employment agreement of the City Manager. The records should reflect that that was consensus approved by four to one vote, with Councilmember Sykes in opposition. That matter will be brought back to the City Council at your next regular session meeting of November the 19th. Next item, Conference of Legal Counsel, existing litigation. The records should further reflect that the City Attorney Office did not participate inasmuch there was a declaration or a request for conflict by the plaintiff in this matter. That special counsel was present in closed session. They have reported to myself that a resolution of this matter and settlement agreement has been authorized unanimously by the five members of the City Council, and that is in the process of being executed and will be available upon execution. Moving on to Conference of Legal Counsel, existing litigation. This also corresponds to the successor agency items. This is the various matters on the Hassan Imports partnership. The records should reflect on this matter. The United States District Court Judge has authorized a stay of any sale of these properties, consistent with the request of the city, subject to the posting of a bond, that the City Council and their successor agency authorized the posting of said bond, with five, four members approving, and Councilmember Sykes and successor agency member Sykes opposing. Moving on to public employee release. On that matter, there were two items heard. Direction was provided to the City Manager's office with respect to those items, but there is no final action and nothing further to report. That concludes my report from closed session. It is appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, any changes to our agenda?
No, there are no current changes to the agenda.
Thank you so much. And at this time, we have our oral communications. That's where we have a five-minute speaking limit, where you can come and address the council on items on the agenda, as well as items of concern. Regards to items of concern that are not on the agenda, we cannot respond, but we would like to get back with you if we could help you in any way. Our phone number at City Hall is (626) 939-8401. With that, I'll call our first speaker, which is Mark Smith.
Do we have it hot? Thank you, yes. Mark Smith here. As you can see, I carry my voting badge, a tag with pride, and I feel that all Americans should, the ones that have the opportunity to vote, to vote, but with their conscience, but be informed. And it's sad that we have some people that don't understand what these liberties have cost in the way of human lives and disrespects generated toward the United States of America. I've traveled the world, and I've seen the world. I've seen the people. And it's sad that they, in those countries, which I will not mention, die for the privilege of voting. And yet, here in the United States, we have such the lowest turnout imaginable. It almost offends me, and when I traveled overseas, people did ask, "Why do Americans not vote? Look at what we have to do." We are threatened by many facets of authority and death. And I'm sad. I had no answer. It was not my role. I was not an ambassador. But nonetheless, I say, I'm glad that this, we do exercise that privilege, and I hope that everyone who does can invigorate and put forth to other people that you may know or do not know to vote next time, always next time. There's no foreseeable reason why nobody can vote in any election, which was today, because you have all the, polls stay open late, they open early. You can also buy mail. And I thank you for the privilege of speaking to you tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lola Finley.
I just want to, this weekend I had a Neighborhood Watch meeting, had a really great turnout. I just want to thank our Police Department Lieutenant Patton that came out and spoke, and City Manager Chung, and I really want to thank the Neighborhood Watch liaison that came out and did the speech. He did a wonderful job. He's also a military man that served. I want to thank him. And I want to thank the two councilmen that came out and spoke also, and it was really good turnout, right? It was interesting, the next day, we had two helicopters in our neighborhood, a fire all within a two-hour span. So neighbors who weren't thinking of participating ended up participating even more. I think I got 10 more calls. But I just want to say our Police Department, again, is doing a great job, and I was really thankful that came out and took the time, and I was glad to see the City Council and City Manager out and supporting us. And my neighbors were really happy, and everyone did a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lloyd Johnson.
Lloyd Johnson, resident of West Covina for over 44 years. First, I would like to say good luck to all the candidates running for any office tonight. Next, you know, one of my biggest P's that I've got up and talked about quite a bit is our veterans. And any time somebody wants a bad mouth on one of our veterans, I'm going to speak up and say something about it. So first, then, first I would like to say to Councilmember Hurford, Councilmember McIntyre, and Councilmembers Satello, thank you so very much for all the years of your dedication to our veterans. You are the only three of the five sitting up here that care for our veterans, and the other two have proven it by their actions. So tonight, I have to say what a disgrace it was, the statement Councilmember Fred Sykes said, made at the Neighborhood Watch on November 3rd at Ginrich Park. "As a disabled Vietnam veteran who fought for my country, I know what our men and women have gone through. You don't have a clue." Fred talks about the statement Councilmember Hurford made when he asked if he weren't voting for Andy McIntyre because he was white. Your statement, "We should be wary of our returning veterans. They are desperate and trained killers without jobs," is despicable. You showed that you're prejudiced against every veteran with the stupid remarks. For a person who never put on a uniform and protected our great country, for whatever reason you decided not to, you don't have the right to question any veteran. You don't have a clue what they have gone through, while you are in the comfort of your home, they are putting their lives on the line so you can show your disrespect for them. You can say your statement was taken out of context. The truth of the matter is, you showed resentment towards our heroes, and you should be ashamed of yourself. You owe every American apology for your complete disrespect towards our military heroes. The next time you want to question one of our heroes, first, don't be afraid to walk in their shoes. And by the way, you know, being a jailer for the county sheriff isn't the same as having your life in arms' way every minute of the day when you are fighting for your country. At least, you got to go home every night to the loved ones. A lot of the heroes never got a chance to come home. So the next time you have something to say to a veteran, thank them for your freedom, not badmouth them.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is George Ogden.
My name is George Ogden. I'm the Commander for the Veterans of Foreign Wars for West Covina, the Sixth District and Assistant Adjutant for all of the San Gabriel Valley, Pomona Valley, and all. I'm also a service officer helping our veterans. Basically, I'm up here to remind everybody that we're going to be having a Veterans Day event here in the city of West Covina, and this will be at 11 o'clock on November 11th, which will be Monday, and hopefully that we can get people to attend. We really appreciate the city coming forward and assisting with this and making sure that this event is happening, and this gives an opportunity for us to say thank you to our veterans that are here. Many of you know that, I'm kind of piggybacking on Mr. Smith here, the veterans do put their lives on their line for the right to vote. And to keep this privilege in place, we do appreciate that opportunity to vote, and we should get out there and do it, and we've had low turnout, as Mr. Smith has been stating. Excuse me. And just to kind of comment on the issue with Mr. Sykes here, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you do have a brother that was a Vietnam veteran, and hopefully you do understand what it's about. I'm pretty sure that you really do. And hopefully, this thing gets kind of quashed and we get it squared away. And lastly, for all the council members that are on board here, that this, where this may move on to better things, and where you may be departing from us and all, a special thanks to all of you who put your time in and shared things with us and tried your best to do the best for the city. I may not agree with all of you at all the time, but I know in my heart where you were going with all of this, so I certainly appreciate all of you for everything that you have done. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Juan Mavidis.
Good evening. Council, I'm here to express my support to item number five on the agenda, and that's in reduction to the speed limit on Vine Avenue. I live on Vine Avenue. I've lived there for 21 years, and I tell you what, I must be a glutton for punishment for continuing to live on Vine Avenue, because speed is an issue. It's definitely an issue that, you know, we have to deal with every single day. And, you know, I've had a daughter learn how to drive, you know, at our house, and, you know, and it's always been kind of little worries where you're, you know, she's learning to back up, and when a car's coming down at 45 miles per hour, you know, sometimes they don't slow down, they go around, they do all kinds of weird things. They'll give you the bird, they'll do all kinds of not-nice things, and, you know, we, you know, of course, we've, you know, I've talked to the Watch Commander and the police, and they have, you know, expressed, you know, that we could possibly set up officers there, but they can't be there 24/7. And I know there's limits to that. And I know it's at 35 miles per hour, but what they've told me is that if a person is going 40 or 45, that's when they'll take it. So everyone really thinks that it's 45 when it's 35. So I know the proposal, and it came out last year for 25, and I know some changes were made, but it's still at 35, and so I'm here to ask you to reconsider that, and let's give it a go, see what happens. I know we have other streets in West Covina that are 25, and they are, you know, similar residential streets. I know Service Avenue is 25, and that's a 40-foot wide street. Ours, my particular section is 37 feet wide, and I know Walnut Creek's 25, and I know that's a 40-foot wide street as well. So I know there is precedent in the city in order for us to reduce the speed on Vine Avenue. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was that, you know, we have 57, or, yeah, 57, no, 59 driveways in that one short section between Lark Island and Azusa, and there's another 60 down the way between Lark Island and Belinda. So there is a lot of, it is a residential street. I know that the question is whether it's a residential street or whether it's a commercial street. Just because it's commercial for 400 feet down at the very west end of the, you know, of the street, doesn't make it a kind of a mixed-use type of street. It's definitely, you know, it's very populated in regards to driveways exiting. I know I lived on Woodside Village before, and I know that the way that city, or that part of the city was structured was that, you know, if you do have a thorough way, the backyards are on the backside instead of, you know, the front side, you know what I'm saying? You know, where, you know, anyway. But the way our, you know, it was built in the 50s, that's the way they designed homes, and, you know, you're coming out onto a very busy street. And so I really do, you know, let's try this, 25 miles per hour, see what happens. So I appreciate it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. That does conclude our oral communication portion of our meeting, and with that, we'll drop down to our consent calendar. If there's no items that need to be removed, we can't...
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion?
I'll see.
A motion, a second? Any comment? Yes?
If I may address Mr. Johnson's...
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I usually go down and address items, but it looked like we had thanking and voting, and you have the floor.
Madam Mayor, why don't we take a vote on the consent item and then come back?
Okay, since we have a motion, absolutely. All right, a motion, a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. That's why you're, we have you. Okay, with that, Councilmember Sykes.
Just briefly, my intent was to motivate folks, and obviously, there was some sort of error in the speech that caused some offense, and I apologize. As far as, Mr. Johnson wasn't there, and he doesn't know what the context of it was, and he doesn't know what I did for, what my assignments were in my career. And that's sad that he should speak as though he has authority and is all-knowing. I am not perfect, and the context of it was simply to try and speak to the importance of our having a Neighborhood Watch, and the point that was remiss is that we need to make sure that we put in place things to help our soldiers when they return. And that is the gist of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we'll drop down on our meeting, and we have consent calendar, and we have mayor councilmember reports, which I have no reports, or AB 1234s. So we'll go down to our City Council requests for reports, studies, or investigations. We have item number six, which is Councilmember Frederick Sykes requesting the City Council to instruct staff to repair resolutions supporting anti-bullying efforts in our community and schools.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At every level of our growing up and our participation in group activities, there are times when you, as an individual, encounter a bullying situation. And because I grew up in impoverished area, and there were a lot of gangs, I had to learn to live with that and adjust, with bullying being just a part of my life, and I didn't let it define me or destroy me. Unfortunately, when you look at today's society, obviously, there are some folks that are not so well-equipped to throw it off, what bullying can do in the way of hazing and interfering with your enjoyment in life. And when you see a young person's life taken away because they were so, they felt so pressured, so harmed, so hurt, that the clock for them, they felt that they had no future, and they would kill themselves. 13, 14-year-old youth, girls, boys, killing themselves. For me, it was just a way of life, but obviously, some folks don't seem to be prepared to look at it that way. And this hazing and bullying is taking away precious lives, hurting families. And I bring this before you tonight to ask my councilmembers that whatever we can do in the way of research, to find out what we as a city can do to help professionals, to help our schools, to help our churches, to throw off a loss of a life, if it's just one we can save. So that's what I'm asking for, if we can do research to see what we can do to assist in keeping another life from being taken because of bullying and hazing type activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council on the item?
Madam Mayor, since it's, Madam Mayor, I assume staff will bring a report back, so. I think what Mr. Sykes says is always good. Sometimes I feel like I'm bullied up here, and I think we all do at times, but, you know, it's kind of interesting when you go through an election and, you know, our city, you know, and I'm not giving an opinion one way or the other, but our city pretty much gets trashed, gets trashed with signs, gets trashed with flyers, it gets trashed with a lot of stuff, but we have a great city, and we need to remember that. And none of us here is bigger than the city of West Covina. The city's been here over 75, 80 years now, and more than that. I think it's almost 90 years. But anyway, we need to keep that in mind, and we want public input, we prefer good constructive input, and keep that in mind. Tomorrow will be a new day. We may have new leaders, we may not have new leaders. The future for West Covina is very bright. When you look around our city, there's a lot of positive things that are going on, and sometimes, in the midst of campaigning, people say stuff, and I heard something today from an individual that I think was just disgusting, but everybody has their right to say stuff, and I hope that when the election's over, that that person can apologize to the councilmember that he made the comments to, because I know that they were either made in error, or he will regret that he said those. So with that, let's all move forward, and we'll have the results here in about a half hour, in about an hour, I guess. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I was going to say I would support it only if it includes the City Council meetings, because it does say "community" on here, so. Well, I think to add to that, you know, I am concerned, obviously, about the cost of something like this, but I think maybe we have the school board liaison, the meetings with the school board, maybe we can add that to the agenda at some point. I don't, I'm not sure who's on that committee, because you are, well, that's, and Andy, there you go. So that, I mean, that would be my suggestion, as well as creating some type of a resource group, because, you know, I have kids, and they obviously have bullying, and it's nice that they come to me for any issues that they have, they get called names, and it's hurtful, and it's not always, you know, I try and just tell them, continue to be positive, to treat others the way that you want to be treated. So I know we have a lot of great churches in the community, we, maybe we could reach out to them for some ideas. Faith Community is a big church in our community, but that's kind of where I'd like to see this, you know, evolve to, if that is the direction that the council chooses. Councilmember Sykes, or Satello.
Thank you. Well, you should talk about bullying, you should think about a little guy, you should think about people getting picked on, but you saw it in NFL, you know, just recently, where that one player was going after the other player. So bullying happens everywhere. And it's something we've got to look into, it's something we've got, I mean, it's something that, as the community and everybody else, it's coming in front. I mean, most people, when they see a bully, they think of a little tiny guy, but when you see those two linemen standing next to each other, you know, they're two big guys, so bullying happens all over the place.
Yeah, my son is 6'2", so go figure. All right, I'm looking, Councilmember McIntyre?
As somebody who's grown up with a handicap, I've always been the small kid, although I like to think that, you know, I can hold my own with my words. That's basically how I've done it, but I understand that, growing up, some people don't have those skills, or the coping mechanisms, or the family structure, so bringing awareness to bullying probably is being one of the closer persons to, growing up and you're going to elementary school and high school in the room, I'm more familiar with it than maybe some of the people. It is prevalent, and it's happening on the internet now, it's not just happening at school, it's never-ending, you can't get away from it, and you can't even run away from it, where you hear little kids running away, running home, where they're running home straight to their computer, and it's continuing on there. So bringing awareness to it, and just maybe, you know, meeting with our schools when we have our meetings is a good idea, is maybe that's just a constant that we got to keep aware of as councilmembers, as leaders, to just remind people that it is a problem out there, and it's growing, and we need to be aware of it and just promote it, maybe at our parks and in those meetings, but I'm all for awareness on the issue.
So it looks like a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. If I could motion that we have staff look into research, see if we can do what other cities are doing, reach out to the churches, as you guys mentioned, just to do something, to send by and do nothing, it's just, that's not us.
Right, and it's nice, too, I see on TV a lot, they talk about anti-bullying, and it's kind of refreshing, always as the person that was known as the weird horse girl in school, that it's nice to see communities and TV and people getting active about anti-bullying. It's becoming an awareness thing, so I, and I think that's great, it's a good step in the right direction, so I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. City Council comments? And Councilmember McIntyre?
Oh, listen, let him go first.
I'd just like to bring attention to and invite everybody, the Second Annual Field of Valor at Sierra Vista Middle School's going to be going on again this weekend. It starts on Sunday, with the kickoff being two Medal of Honor recipients giving speeches along with a major general. They're going to be, they're going to be bringing their Medal of Honors, and you're going to be able to talk to them and ask questions afterwards, so please, everybody, check it out, it's a pretty impressive event. We take about 2,000 full-size, like, this year it's going to be 2,017, I believe, full-size flags, three foot by five foot, and it's pretty impressive to see. Thank you. It's going to be at 9:30 on Sunday, and it'll go till about 11:30. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sykes?
Regarding the Field of Valor, I have two flags that I will be purchasing, one from my father and one from my brother. And regarding what Councilmember Hurford spoke of, about trash in our city, I had a call this weekend about a family that felt, well, the father was concerned about a beehive that was developing near his driveway. And I called around and found a private concerned gentleman that I know that deals with bees, and he came out, and after he handled the bee situation, he gave me a call back. And his call wasn't so much about the bees, he said the bees is no problem. He says, "How do you deal with all these signs? You know, how many you got, how many do you have running for office?" He says, "Your city just is shocking," when he drove in and saw the signs anywhere and everywhere. And so one of the things I'd like to ask is, please, it'd be nice if we could make it a tradition, I mean, I know they, our code is 10 days, but it'd be nice if we could clean it up tomorrow, whether we win or lose. And I know that in 2011, there were signs that were out for three months after the election was over. So I'm hoping we can, we can get busy and clean things up to get our city back to so it looks presentable. And that was, that was what was most memorable to him, not the beehive, but the galore of lawn signs. And I'm hoping that we can also, and we don't know what the results are going to be, but it'd be nice if we could get a resolution whereby we didn't enact things that we have to perhaps work on and recall should we get a new council. So I'm hoping we can wait till after everything is said and done, and the new council is constituted, before we make major decisions. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Already threatened a recall, huh? Wow. Okay. Kind of didn't go with the theme tonight, but... Kind of didn't go with the theme tonight, but anyway, yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an adjournment in memory of John Hughes' brother, Tom Hughes, and John would like to invite anybody that would like to go to his funeral Friday, 12 noon at Sacred Heart Church. I've met Tom before, he was a great guy, and I know he will be missed by the Hughes family, so John asked me to invite people to the funerals Friday, 12 noon at Sacred Heart Church.
Thank you. I have another adjournment. Andrea Pedrosa of West Covina, who passed away last week just after celebrating her 90th birthday. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the families during these difficult times.
Madam Mayor, I think the notes may have been incorrect. It was my understanding that they, she was in, she was here to visit her family so that they could celebrate her 90th birthday. And she fell ill and passed away prior to the birthday, so they were preparing for her birthday.
Oh, okay.
And now they're, they're having to prepare for a funeral.
Okay.
So.
Well, our prayers go out to her family, to the families, and during the tough times, and bring everyone together, and I, I know those times, it's hard, you know, when you lose, lose family, and especially when they mean so much. So everyone, thank you for being here tonight, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.